Thank you all for coming to this, let's see, we got the August 19, 2024, regular board meeting of the Harlan Community School District Board of Education. And so we will first of all call the meeting to order and determine that we do have a quorum tonight. So glad to have everybody here. Second is to note that this is a public forum and so we always encourage anyone that wants to to come and speak. Of course, we have certain order to do that in and guess Catherine, was there anyone that wanted to come and speak tonight? Okay, so we'll move on to item C, approve the agenda and any discussion on the agenda?
So moved.
Too long or anything like that? Oops, I moved by Jade. Roger, seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we have the discussion items D and we'll turn it over to superintendent Barnett.
I'll make this short too. We had our opening day today, so that's exciting, all 217 employees, which is fun. We had breakfast this morning, the chamber gave part of the breakfast and then our nutrition services created, made it. So it was, it was very good. We had four board members there, which is awesome too. Just real quick, go through what we're looking forward to during the school year. My favorite part is we have four, we had six students, we have two students from each school that get up and all the way from second grade till a senior and talk about what they're looking forward to. So it's just kind of fun to have them up there. Otherwise, I don't have anything new. We got a volleyball scrimmage going on right now, which is exciting, and a football scrimmage Friday, and the band, do you want to talk a little bit about that, the band event?
Oh, sure, yeah. It's Tuesday, August 27th, it's just, the marching band has a preview. So the music boosters are gonna feed the community, parents, whoever wants to come out, free hamburgers, hot dogs. Just to try to get some more exposure for those kids, I guess, and that's, yeah.
That's on Tuesday and then on Wednesday, if you want dinner as well, you can come because Dr. Gentile is gonna talk about just digital media and the brain and how those things work. So we'll have spaghetti dinner up here at 5:30.
Yes.
And then he's gonna speak at 7:00.
We're partnered with MRTU for that.
Yeah.
As part of the Health and Wellness Committee, I was able to see him speak last year at a summit in Des Moines. And the presentation that he gave was extremely interesting, but also full of so many things that I think parents are, if you are aware, you don't know what to do about it. And if you're unaware, it just seems to be a mounting thing that our generation and below are starting to have to combat. Is, you know, the time on digital media, social media, things like that. So we worked hard to get him here. He'll be in the high school and the middle school speaking to students during the day. And then we're doing a free pasta dinner and we will have childcare available for eight and under with people that are, will be coming in from different areas, but one will have like STEM robots and just things that kids can do, but everybody else can be in the auditorium for him. And I would recommend everybody come to him. I was extremely impressed. I think he will hold up to the hype that I've given him, but.
Sorry, what was his name again?
Dr. Douglas, is it Gentile?
Gentile, I say Gentili, but it's Gentili.
Some semblance of that, we'll find out for sure, I guess, how to say his name properly when he comes. But he's a professor at Iowa State. And what I saw him specifically present on at the summit in Des Moines was like video gaming and how that's affecting the brain. And he had a statistic that I might get wrong, but that like kids' school age are on social and digital media more than anything else for hours in their day, including sleeping now at this time. So there's pros to that some, but there are cons and what it's doing in learning environments and how kids even learn. So I'm excited to have him and the hospital's been great to work with.
Yeah, MRTU is partnering with us, so it's been.
Yes, yep, they've been great to work with, so I, I hope we get a good amount of community members because this is somebody that knows quite a bit about it, so.
Did you say Tuesday night?
That's Wednesday night.
Tuesday is the band.
Next Wednesday.
Yes.
In what time?
We start the feed at 5:30 and then he's gonna start speaking promptly at, is it 7? Yes, 7:00 in the auditorium. There will be like a small question and answer at the end. We've asked Ann Hightop to be the moderator so that we can kind of keep things moving along, but we'll dismiss people ahead of that, so it'll, you won't be out past probably 9 o'clock that evening, but.
We also contacted all the churches because it's on a Wednesday night and they are helping their families to get here as well.
Yeah, either they didn't have their activities started again or they were willing to.
They were willing to give that night to this cause, so that was helpful.
What age group is he speaking to during the day?
He, if you want the exact schedule, I have it from Ann. But I believe that middle school and high school will have the opportunity to hear him. In what part, I can't remember whether it's middle school first or high school second. But he, we have them, him the entirety of the day, so we're trying to hit as many sections of kids and staff as well as hospital staff as possible.
Not elementary at this time, it's just middle and high.
So it looks like 10 to 11, he'll speak to the middle school kids, 1 to 2, he'll speak to high school kids. At 3:30 is opportunity for elementary teachers if they choose to attend because it'll be after school. And then everybody is welcome in the evening. And we did open up the daytime sessions not to the community, but to the staff at MRTU in case they had people that were able to make it during the day and not in the evening, whatever, so.
Yeah, hopefully two, about two weekends are on social media prior to 5:30.
Oh, practically just surprised.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, yeah.
But it's, it's not really even social media as much, but he won't focus fully on the video gaming, but a lot of his presentation up there was about video gaming, screen time and what that's doing even in like aggression and, but how it's affecting how kids learn, so.
Their attention spans are sort of shorter.
Short.
Is what?
So much shorter because they get immediate gratification from a video gamer or something like that, so, yeah.
And if we can bring some awareness through the Health and Wellness Committee, I, I'm sure we won't solve the problem on Wednesday night, but yeah, start a conversation hopefully, so, yeah.
Very good. How about D2, the Facility Committee update, would you like to bring this up today, especially on the addition?
Um, yes, so we had good news. Well, first of all, there's a change order that's gonna be approved, which got sent to you. It's just a small one and we can talk about that later. So the middle school saga that has gone on and on, we just found out from our lawyers that actually the Davis Bacon wages don't apply to the project, which would have been really helpful to know in the beginning. But I'm glad we found out now before we made any decisions. So we're gonna go back to square one, we will do one bid for the whole entire project because we were trying to do two so we could save some money. So right now, we're, I would say within the next couple of weeks, we should have everything ready to review before it goes out to bid. We won't start the project until the end of next school year because it will affect lots of classrooms and some construction stuff, so.
But what was your adjective in your notes? We had a blank meeting. I screenshotted it, the senator, I said, oh no, we fought. Diligent, diligent.
Did it, did I? Diligent?
Maybe, your adjective was funny though. No, we fought.
Yeah.
Oh, and we didn't even need to.
No. It was a, it was a healthy discussion.
Healthy, no, I don't remember what you said, but I highlighted screenshot and sent it to Jen, I'm like, no.
Is the intermediate, is that coming along on time?
Oh, the intermediate is on time and so is the high school at this point.
They're both slightly ahead.
So a little bit ahead.
The high school.
They're both about a week.
About a week.
No, it just made me laugh, how she put it or something. It was just funny, anyway.
It was politically correct.
It was.
Great, thanks. Any other questions on the facilities? I mean, we've got Cyclone Village out here that you walked through, so.
I thought that was hilarious.
We, we have a question, Jen had a question, we were walking in.
The totes of water.
What's that for?
Those are for the restrooms.
Okay, what happens in the wintertime?
They put, they wrap them.
Yeah, they're wrapping them, so we, yep, yep.
I don't know if they'll put a chemical on them so they won't freeze.
No, we're wrapping them, but, yep.
And by the time.
Like with a bow?
Christmas time.
Uh, about the end of December.
Oh, okay, yep. Yeah, I noticed the totes of water, I was like, oh, that's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, they're gonna take the farthest ones away, the two on the east end and the one on the south.
Yeah, hopefully by December.
So three will disappear?
Three will disappear, probably about the end of December.
The total is how many?
Seven.
There's seven right now. We weren't really sure if we needed four for the second semester, but we wanted to err on making sure they had plenty of space, so.
Just in case.
It's part of the reason we retained four.
And so the principals are dealing with it good?
Principals and the teachers too, I haven't, I mean, I, what are you gonna do? And the classrooms are nice and cool and the restrooms are right there, so there's really no reason for you to have to leave class, so.
The word I heard, the inconvenience is worth the endgame.
Yes, they're, they definitely know it'll be worth it, so.
I did see that you see on social media that they might be a little loud, so.
Yeah, I'm sure, because there's two right next to each other.
So I don't know if we'll, maybe hear some feedback about that, but I did see a couple people wondering about that.
Probably can't get any worse than the metal walls.
Yeah, very true.
Five years from now, nobody will know the difference.
And everyone seems to have, I mean, unless you have a senior who she's like, I gotta go in that and I don't even get the news, so I'm like, well, that's a small break, yeah, you're fine.
Yeah, it's fine.
Good, odd facility committee update. Okay, let's move on to item E, action items. At number one, we have the personnel report and we'll look to Mrs. Hubbard, can you tell us about this?
This doesn't look right.
I was so happy to, why? We don't have any vacancies for teachers.
Yeah, there's nothing on that bottom one.
I was, I was so close today, made an offer, they accepted, and then I got a call. So we're still short one teacher associate, one pair, so we're, but.
We're pretty cool, we got all next week to find one.
Yeah.
All this week, all this week, all this week.
So I think we're, we're doing okay.
We did.
I'm, I'm confident that we'll have another one by next week, but yeah, so we've, we've kind of been busy hiring people.
Thirty-three people, so from the beginning to the end. Custodians and every, custodians, paras, cooks, and teachers, and no secretaries.
A few more probably on the custodian, cook side and para side than in the last couple of years, are not about the same?
Well, the custodians, yes, we had a couple of retirements, so that's good, but no.
Teacher side was about the same?
I would say it was about the same.
Teacher is. And cooks and paras have been hard in the last few years.
They all were introduced this morning, so.
Yeah.
That was good.
And I saw another district, somebody posted something that another district was worried they were even gonna have enough to be able to function, kind of close to us with cooks, so.
Yeah, kitchen's very.
We're doing, we're.
Yeah, you guys are doing great.
Perfect.
Okay, so any other discussion on the personnel report, otherwise we'll look for a motion before, before Catherine gets all raped all over. So moved by Roger, accept the personnel report, seconded by Jen.
Who are we doing?
I would stay out.
Al did it first, I'm looking at Al.
Okay, very good. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Next, we have here, action item E2, the approval of issuance to Gamblin Change Order Number One. Would you like to tell us about this, Dr. Barnett?
Sure, so this is just a change order of $6,561 and it basically, when they looked at the ceiling and the ductwork in the high school, there was some insulation that needed to be replaced on the pipes, so it's not.
Nobody was shocked.
Yeah, I, I mean, it could be 50-year-old insulation, we don't know, so.
Well, yeah, I'm surprised it wasn't.
Yeah. And we sent pictures, so.
But we're gonna see a few more of these.
No, when I mean, I should have assumed that everything was gonna have to be replaced up there for insulation.
Yeah.
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, at least, yeah.
You don't know what it looks like yet, you can't get, yeah, yep. Yep, so that's what, that's all it is.
I will say this is a very nice change order.
Oh, yay!
At least I was very impressed. All the information's there.
Those guys are smart, smart.
Okay, we have a.
I make a motion to approve the change order.
Okay, we have a motion from Jade to approve the change order in a second? Second.
So you better.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Okay, next, we have Policy Review Schedule First Reading.
These are all of the ones that we review annually, we're gonna change anything in it, so.
My only question is what you wanted to add, is that on the second reading? So that, does that move it to first again? That's what I wanted to read.
Yes, sorry.
No discussion on this or any concerns? We'll look for a motion to approve.
Well, do you just want to explain why you want it that way?
Yeah, it's on the second.
It's on the second reading.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We got a motion from Roger, is that right? Yeah? Okay, and the second, approve the first reading from Hal. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. So next, we have the Policy Review Schedule Second Reading.
Okay, so on the second reading for compulsory attendance, I just want to change, there's, there's some new laws that are coming out, so we're gonna see some, a couple other attendance things come up. And we as a district, we're doing a lot of what is already gonna be mandated anyway. And the new laws talk about compulsory attendance, which is, and then they also talk about just excessive attendance and steps to take in order to be proactive so that we understand and get kids to school. But this, this policy that we have on compulsory attendance talks about if you have a child over the age of six and under the age of 16 by September 15th, it's, it's the law, they have to come to school. The other part of this that isn't in here is any time a child is enrolled in school. So if you enroll your four-year-old to preschool, they still have to follow these compulsory attendance laws. So they still have to come to school. Now, if you choose, if they're not coming and you're missing too many days and we have to have a meeting with you and you can choose if they're not six by September 15th to unenroll them, but if they're enrolled in school, they have to follow the compulsory attendance laws. So I feel like we just need to put that in here somewhere. So I would like to add a sentence and I will re, I will massage it and get it right. And then we can take it back to the, so I'd like to remove just that first one, the policy one, 50103, just so that everybody's on the same page.
Is it compulsory attendance 50103, you said?
And the, yes, the open enrollment dates changed or?
Yeah, so open enrollment had always been March 1st. And then last year, the legislators, right at the end of the year, said it can be any time, any time of the year, which is very hard for school districts and it's really hard on the billing side of things. Because you bill for the days that they're.
No, you can point here.
Oh, I can see him doing it.
Right.
At, at semester, but, but anytime, you know.
But March 1st means for the following school year.
Right.
So it's not, so then that gives you time to, you know, get your ducks in a row and make sure. The other, the only exception to that is kindergarten. So if you're a kindergartner and you want to open enroll, like we're still getting some open enrollments in kindergarten because it's September 15th. And that's the way it had always been too, so basically the law just reverted back. The only other exception with that is they did leave in online, online courses. So if there's an accredited online school that you want to open enroll into, you can do that at any time. So that's an exception. We, we don't have very many of those around in the state anyway, but that, that is a little different.
So open enrollment is now what's date then?
March 1st.
It is back to March 1st.
Yep, so anyone that did not open enroll, like if we wanted, if someone from AHST wanted to open enroll to us right now and they didn't do it before July, well, July of this year, because the law's transitioning, then they have to stay there unless the board's approved.
Unless both, okay.
Or they're now moving forward though, we have March 1st. So no one can leave here or we can't accept anyone unless both agree.
That's, I thought it changed again from the last time.
Yeah, that anytime was, that really does. I mean, I could have seen maybe tw- one, twice a year, you know, but.
But that affects athletic eligibility and all other kinds of things that people don't think about, so.
How many openings do we have for this year out, not in?
Oh, answer both.
Well, five, yeah. We have much more coming in than we do out, but.
Heard of it.
Yes.
That's a probably a right.
Yeah.
She tracks her enrollment, because it'll.
Well, you said the legislature changed it, how, how does that work that they, how do they get changed back? How does that?
They thought it was a hot mess.
Yeah, well, there were. No, they changed it this session.
Oh, they changed it.
They changed it in the session that ended in 2023.
But earlier, we had.
Anytime and then.
Some more discussion.
They fixed it, yes.
That, that makes sense.
Last year about this, where you said we have to track them for the whole year.
Besides the fact, I feel like that's disruptive.
Oh, she said for this year. Do you mean all the students or do you mean like, oh, just do this year?
No, totally.
No, yeah.
That's fine, I'll take whatever you have.
I'll get it to you.
Okay, then what do you have?
Right.
This is open, new, new open enrollment for this year?
We don't have them all in there though, like we got three today.
Oh, okay.
That's the thing, it's just until September 15th, I'll, I'll put it in my Friday notes.
Because of kindergarten.
Yeah.
Well, just 130, I think, I, I think.
Just give it, yeah, it's a rough estimation.
138 or?
In?
In.
In and.
And how, 17 out?
No, probably more than that.
Like 40?
I don't know, I, I can't even, yes, I would think, yes.
You didn't say it, Brian.
Yeah, 100, 100 out?
No.
No, not even, no.
If I took a wild guess, it would have been 40.
That's it, between 30, 30 and 50.
30 to 50.
Say 40, so, 40 out and 138 in.
But ones that we, um.
I don't know what to say, I don't, I can't even.
Ones that we transport to various, those don't count as open enrollment. Those are tuition now.
Do you think our net open enrollment is going up or down?
It's pretty steady.
Pretty steady.
Yeah, stays about the same. Yeah, it just depends on, I don't want to say, you don't want to say anything about it, but if there's scuttlebutt in a specific district, then sometimes they might say next year, I'll rather come somewhere else.
And how about the enrollment in total?
We will know that October 1st, so. And we'll actually have a better, we can get a better count of that after like the first week of school when you know who shows up, because yes, parents enroll, but sometimes there's a lot that just come during, you know.
Do preschool numbers count in that, that we shared with Ed said?
They count as a half of a person.
Okay.
So that's why one of the legislative things is always to try to get full-day preschool funding because then you would get.
Well, yeah, and look to see what our first grade kindergarten enrollment looks like, is that going up or down?
Yeah, kindergarten was a little bit smaller this year, wasn't it, Brian? So this, this kindergarten was small.
Fourth grade this year.
Yes, yeah, it just kind of depends. And then when, when they get to sixth grade, sometimes we get the students from Shelby County Catholics and then that grows. So yeah, it's hard to predict. But I can get you the numbers.
Increase it a little bit that year? I mean, that'd be about four years, did that decrease it?
I don't know.
Interesting.
I will get you those numbers too after the first, probably the first week, because then we'll have a better idea.
So do we need to make a motion specifically to approve everything but that one?
That's a good question, you want to try and work, work, have you like to work with this?
Well, what I wrote was, the board will recommend the Policy Review Schedule Second Reading and it's presented with the exception of the compulsory attendance 50103 policy, which will be removed and revised to include preschool, it will be presented at the first reading next month.
So moved.
Awesome.
And the second?
Jen.
I got it.
Jen.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Next, we have item number, let me make sure, okay, so next, we have the item number five, the Consent Agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent, consent agenda? I did ask Catherine and there was no, what do you call it, the item under the B, the prepaid warrants and that type thing, since it's here and, right, Brian?
Right, the financial records, yeah, until we get the CAR filed, that'll be.
I mean, then we have the P card in the board report. I was gonna ask Baker Group, I've heard of that, but I can't remember.
Baker Group is the part of the security stuff.
Oh, yeah, that was based off of security, that's what I figured.
Do you think our utilities will increase with having the trailers? Because we're paying a hefty utility bill.
What I would tell, what I would tell you, if it's any indication last, the bill that I had to pay there on the 13th, I believe they're gonna go down until we're done with construction.
You're still heating this building and you have those.
But they're, they're not, they're not running a lot of the heavy air handling equipment over here, which that's a big draw. Now, once, I'll know more once we go through one month of this, but that's the lowest summer bill I've paid since I've been here. But again, I would tell you, I think a lot of it is because you don't have a lot of mechanical running on the west end of the school.
Yeah, you won't have, because you won't have to heat it and cool it up to the same specs as you need to have comfort because you're gonna have people working in there.
Right.
You don't have to run it as high, so.
Because I actually asked Mike about it, he said, no, those zones are shut down. When you shut a zone down, you're, you're not running all the stuff.
And you don't like.
And we are just getting some new insulation.
But I don't know what his, that was saying over. And Jade Trilly, we're hitting this fall on when we have 7, you're kind of pretty moderate weather.
Does that have to be a board?
Our hope would be that they're not gonna be terrible to run.
Just curious, because I saw that, I was, I hate being mindful until some time.
Can we go back on that, as an example, the intermediate, I still do think that heating and cooling that building, while we have another building to have some.
This winter, I think, could be not very strict.
Well, what's the farmer's almanac?
That, that's what I actually envisioned when I, no.
More snow than.
But that's the lowest bill, that's the lowest bill.
That's what the farmer's almanac says, of the, more snow, more snow than.
We can save a lot now.
Okay, yeah. How about the consent agenda, any discussion about the consent agenda? Any of the bills we got to ask Brian about?
I asked about mine, so.
Okay.
So moved.
Someone. There you go, and a second.
We have some senior pitchers, I'm sorry.
We got a second by Greg, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We're gonna jump back up in the agenda, just a little bit under discussion item and bring something else up that we wanted to bring up this, this meeting, if that's okay with everybody?
Just a reminder to look at your legislative platform that I sent because as a board, we need to decide on the top two to three that we would like IASB to consider. And then what happens is they take everybody's that's involved in IASB and then when we go to the convention in November, the delegate assembly kind of brings up everything and they vote as a group, and you are on delegate assembly, I think, you are the delegate. kind of brings up everything and they vote as a group, and you are on delegate assembly, I think, you are the delegate.
I am.
Yeah, you're not.
So you and I get to go. Or you can assign the alternate if you can't go, but, um, but basically they vote and then they just kinda decide which, how to prioritize what they're gonna lobby for.
Sure. Right, I don't even know what the hot ticket ones are this year, last year was preschool funding and retention for teachers. Maybe that's getting better and easing, I don't know, I, I'm not sure what the hot button ones are right now.
With the minimum wage increase, that helps with the kitchen, I don't think.
I think preschool is always on there and is one, and then the mental health stuff has been on there a lot too, um, and I'm sure it's going to be interesting about the AEAs, because we're gonna see the unintended consequences of all of the fallout of that, so, um, I'm sure that will be something that people talk about, we're already seeing a little bit of that now.
The unintended consequences.
Unintended consequences of the services that we aren't getting or we are getting.
And is this particularly focusing on these, uh, calls and legislative resolutions on the last few pages? There's about ten of them here, is there seven, seven or eight?
I think. You can look at those, but I do think, um, so that's, that's just IASB's beliefs, but we get to decide as a board, what would we like them to lobby for, for our district, what do we need, we, I mean, preschool comes up often, um.
And we, we present our, here's what we would like to see, two delegate assembly, delegate assembly makes the decision on what are the IASB priorities? That the legislator, legislatures.
Were they suggesting what, what they think?
There's seven items.
And then they usually, what, two out?
They proposed. We can put it in.
Two or three?
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, but it's unlikely.
But we have until November?
Yeah, we went twice.
No.
Well, they, they want us to give our priorities in the next month or so, so if, you can look at it and then tell me what you think and then, um.
That was in November.
Well, we go to the meeting in November.
Yeah, they want to gather all of our information, so they'll have it ready for November, so they can know what to spend a lot of time on and not.
What's, what's, what?
Preschool, I would say is one huge one, um, I'm always a proponent of mental health, I wouldn't say that we need help, I mean, we, we always take, we'll take whatever they'll give us, but we, I feel like we've got that kind of under somewhat control and we've got good partners, um. The, uh, the school choice is always one that, you know, we want kids to come to public school so that we can, but we also have a really good relationship with Shelby County Catholic, so, uh, I don't know, I just think preschool.
We didn't see as much of that as larger districts.
We did not.
We don't have a draw to other facilities.
No, we did not, so those, those are kind of the big things, and then local control, us, us as a school board being able to make decisions versus being told what we want to do.
Is there anything in the AEA that you would, would put as a priority or, or that we lost, or?
Um, I just think that they need to keep the special ed funding there, because they've moved special ed funding to the Department of Ed and they, um, for example, they're struggling to hire people at, at the Department of Ed for, under the special ed, so I heard the other day that they had, uh, I think there were sixty-four openings and as of a couple weeks ago, they had hired six of those. So, I, I mean, what's gonna happen is we've had this middle layer that's really the, the person that helps us solve lots of problems with parents and, not problems, but just if there's concerns and issues, you, you've got that person to go to, and I, I know the department doesn't move near as fast and then people complain about the AEA, but at least you had somebody to talk to and the department moves even slower, because they're so big, and, um, I, I'm fearful of.
Districts are gonna make their own position.
Well.
Well, if they make their own position, then that means we have to pay for all of that too.
Right, but we still have to now, because we don't have help in that middle layer, right?
Well, no, we still, right now, as of right now, next year, on the special ed side of stuff, they get ninety, AEA gets ninety percent of the funding and we get ten percent to decide what we wanna do with. So we could keep that ten percent or give it back to them, because we want all of our services. I will tell you, had a conversation today that is very frustrating, because we're not getting the same special ed services that we had last year, and I'm advocating for that, because they told us we would get those, so if you're not gonna give us the same thing, and part of it is because they can't find people to work for them, because they're worried, if I were for you, am I gonna have a job next year, some, cause if they're good, somebody's offering them a job right now, so it's.
And you're talking, when you're talking about these, this is the AEA that you're talking about?
Yes, yeah. Bless you.
So really, we should be advocating for the key to special ed under the AEA?
Uh, yeah. Yes.
Cause you know that if the Department of Ed's gonna do this, there's gonna be so much bureaucracy in there, that things are gonna move slow and it's not gonna be a good situation.
Yes. Right.
I think you hit the nail on head talking about local control, because anytime you go to the, to bigger ups, it's, just gets a lot more messed up. If we can keep it with, uh, area education closer by and with, with board, it's gonna be more efficient.
Right. Especially for on the special ed side of things.
Yep.
The other.
My vote would be that and, and preschool.
Preschool, I, I agree, I, I mean, if we're gonna.
Not even hard work, you know, I don't think anything can top that.
Yeah.
Other items in here that?
I mean, teacher retention is important, but I do feel like they've done, they've done some things and we, we have, if we look at our own selves, those, those are the top two, preschool and then the AEA, right?
Oh, definitely. We hit that topic.
Last year, teacher retention was huge, but what did we, I mean, we really.
Well, they increased the starting salary, so they did their part, so then we gotta do our part as a local control to, to do our part, so there's only so much they can do.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, and maybe they feel better about that now, other districts won't be bringing it, I don't know.
The local control is another piece that they do say they will advocate for, so if you wanted the third one, you could put that.
Yeah.
They, they, uh, number one and number eight both has to do with learning and literacy, but what's your feelings on that these days?
I, I think we have strong, we have strong teachers, we have strong principals, we have strong learning principles, and we are ahead of the science of reading, like, that, that's again, another local control thing, we did that on our own, with, with, it's called letters, and we did that on our own and started it last year, and now the state has mandated that, so, I mean, we know what's best, I feel like, and are doing the right things, so, yes, I feel like we wanna advocate for that, but we don't really need to, because I feel like we've got some good experts here, but I'd rather advocate for the local control where we're not told exactly what we have to do, um.
Is there, maybe this is getting off a little bit, but the, does the teachers associate, or the, the education department, Iowa, Iowa Education Department have anything, I mean, with, with the health insurance for teachers, do they have a pool that goes where all the districts are in one pool?
There is a group, and I think it's I, I SCA, but I, please don't quote me on that, there is a group, but typically, a lot of them that are involved in that are the larger schools. The rates are really not that much different.
I was gonna say, unless they can advocate for something to where everybody's in a pool that could maybe make it even better.
Right, the problem, the problem with insurance, both health insurance and with the building, building insurance right now, it's, I think you've heard this, I'm sure, but it's a really hard market. It, it's not the time to go look at. It, it's, cause.
Well, especially for building health insurance, but, but especially for property insurance.
I had a conversation with an insurance agent, and he says, have you got an agent right now, even on your personal insurance? You might not like the rates, but you'd be able to keep them, cause it's really hard to find them.
I just didn't know if that size of a, you know, with the whole state of Iowa, if there's a way they could lobby for some type of a better health program, health insurance program.
That would be well.
For, for the teacher years in the state of Iowa.
Schools, schools historically have been a, a larger pool to insure, um, profit-wise or, um.
So.
Rate, rate-wise, um, they're, they've notoriously always, and, and I don't even think it's just Iowa, I think it's nationwide, schools are high insurability.
And our rates obviously increase, but we had just some unfortunate.
But I mean, if you have lots of people in your pool, that helps with your.
Well, yeah, healthy, healthy people in your pool.
Anyway, I was just asking because of.
Healthy, right.
Healthy people in your pool.
I was just asking because of the group, you know, because of what we're talking about, you know, so.
Yeah, no, I, yep. Yeah, no, I think that's.
So give you a little, uh, information.
Yeah, I think, is that enough?
Well, so, then we can. Preschool, mental health, local control?
Yeah.
And I think I think.
Pre this one. Special ed and AEA.
Special ed, AEA.
AEA.
And the.
Oh, AEA, yeah.
AEA.
That's only choice, but it says, do your, does your district wanna make amendments to the legislative resolutions or submit amendments, so we'll work on that together.
They put AEA in there.
Now, you've been very active in that, any thoughts?
Well, yeah, I mean, the legislature has their, uh, they've got a lot of.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right.
Work that they've put into these things and they've got an appetite for making some of the decisions they've made and they I think we've got good priorities, just based on what we've talked about. It's all gonna go into the big mix of, of suggestions and then they will come up, that day we will all come up, or Jade will, Jade will come up with it.
And they, they talked to representatives and senators and stuff ahead to see where different interests lie, that they're not coming up with this on their own without knowing they have some backing from people whose vote, you know, we elect them for their vote to make a difference for us, so they're on the right track with what